First is too loud, then it's not loud enough. We're gonna call a meeting to order.
Ms. Howe?
Yes, we're here.
Ms. Bullock, Tiana, here. Mr. Westlawser?
Here.
Mr. Almarichi?
Present.
Mr. Betsy? Mr. Kiesblas?
Here.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Here.
All right, item two is civil reflection, so what we'll do is have pledge of allegiance and then moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, item three is the approval of the agenda.
I have a adjustment.
To adjust, I need to get it right.
I would propose that we remove thirteen, large A, small c, the employment agreement for township superintendent in that we still have not evaluated her and we extended her contract for three months.
The only reason for that was just an FYI point, so... It's all that was, so thirteen, large A, C.
Yeah, so I would move, we approve the agenda with that removed.
Okay, better remember. Any other changes? No, that's good. So we have a motion with that change?
Second.
Mr. Betsy?
Yes.
Mr. Almarichi?
Yes.
Mr. Kiesblas?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Bullock, Tiana, yes, Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Westlawser?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, is there a disclosure of county interest? Doesn't seem to be. So we're on item five, which we view as public statements. Doesn't appear that we have any. I see Adam's here, so from the county, state, federal, or other agencies.
I was a little shocked, I was waiting for the public statement, too. Good evening. I understand that next week will be the meeting of the broadband task force, so I don't know if we've got any more information yet from, you know, when we put out for our contractors, I haven't heard back about that, so you guys can fill me in on that, too. At the county, obviously, with you, you know, gas prices are going up, so we're having to adjust our budgets upward accordingly, so gas prices roughly double, so our budget's going up roughly double for gas for the various different departments. I saw, it's gonna be discussed later this month, so I don't have the specific app, but I saw that there's a request by the 911 director to have the Bath Fire Department update their radios, that you've still got the Harris radios. There's gonna be some difficulty adapting it to the new Motorola system that the county has switched over to, so I don't know if you've been informed of that, but it looks like it's gonna be a request coming from the Georgia column. Based on what I've seen in the packet, it looks to be about a $6,000 expense for the Bath Fire Department, so. Planning Commission, you know, we don't, obviously, you control your own planning and zoning, but we're looking at some items that have kinda caused us a little bit of pause. Wedding bards have been a particularly struggle for the Planning Commission, because right now, as our as our code says, that they have to be attached to a farmer's market, which Andy T. right now is operating kind of distantly from a farmer's market, and then another applicant wanted a wedding bar and really didn't want a farmer's market, so they put in a token farmer's market to have their wedding bar, so we're kinda reevaluating that and saying, you know, does it really have to be attached to a farmer's market and where is it most applicable? Solar farms are another interesting topic. Obviously, we haven't had a second one, we had a second one, we had the permit pulled, but then it didn't go in. We already have markets on the outskirts of St. John's. I know that the two rural townships, is it Dallas and Bengal, I think, the ones that broke away from planning and zoning from the county because of disagreement on wind turbine regulation, they've also started to tighten up restrictions on solar farms. We're just gonna take a peek at that. We don't really have a driving idea, but I think maybe there, maybe a cap or something needs to be discussed. I mean, at some point, you don't wanna, you know, be, because we're right situated in that ideal, you know, transmission line of ITC running through the county. I know that the utilities are being, you know, driven very hard to switch over to renewables. You know, there's gonna have to be some kind of public debate about energy versus agriculture. You know, most of the times when you cite an energy plan in the past, whether it was nuclear, fossil fuel, or, you know, it was always done somewhere, not quite in prime area development, using an industrial area or or brownfield or something else like that, so we kinda have to, you know, I don't have an answer to this. I just think there probably needs to be a discussion about it. You know, are we gonna, what are we gonna do about it? Is there a cap? I know that the Bengal and Dallas were looking at it as trying to put it into non-prime farmland. Now, it's a little bit tricky about how you define the prime farmland. I know, you know, just speaking, you know, I know that, you know, every farm has got more profitable or productive acreage, some acreage, maybe even sitting more in a wetland or it's just not as productive. So we're not opposed to a farmer who's got maybe like three or 400 acres, taken 40 or 50 that's not as productive and putting it in the solar. What we're concerned about is if the utilities come in, they just wanna grab five, six, seven hundred acres, thousand acres at a time, and just start, you know, wholesale converting, you know, family farms over into massive solar farms, so. I don't have an answer to that. I'm just bringing up, saying it's a question I think we need to have discussion. Just at a 15-minute point of discussion, Planning Commission, there were a lot of strong feelings about it. It was pretty divided, you know, right down the middle. Of course, we have several farmers on the Planning Commission, so they didn't want to, you know, lose the opportunity to do something with their lesser productive agricultural lands. And just lastly, we held our public hearing for the county budget. It had its usual sparse attendance, and by sparse, I mean none, no one showed up. So it's required, we have to do that. It's in the evening, it was at 6:00, 6:30 in the evening. So that's all I got to, as an update, but obviously, there's gonna be a lot of stuff coming in the next few months, so I'll give you an update on, so. Any other questions for me? Okay, thank you.
One quick one, Adam. That's okay, you can answer it from where you're sitting. Adam?
Oh.
Nope, you're good, stay right there. Do we have access to the budget?
Yeah.
A copy?
Yeah, it's on.
Well, not online, but I mean, our copy.
Yeah, you can get it from our couple, same way if you want to request it.
I know, I didn't show you, but, yes, thank you. Okay, it's gonna, I don't see anybody else. Okay. The acceptance of number seven, which is our consent agenda.
Support.
Mr. Almarichi?
Yes.
Mr. Kiesblas?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Bullock, Tiana, yes, Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Westlawser?
Yes.
Mr. Betsy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, item nine is approval vouchers.
I think we have to approve the minutes, number eight.
Oh, I'm sorry, I put those together. You're correct. You have approval of board trustee, maybe minutes.
I'll move to approve the minutes of the Board of Trustees' work session of October 3, 2022, and the regular meeting of October 3, 2022.
Second.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Bullock, Tiana, yes, Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Westlawser?
Yes.
Mr. Betsy?
Yes.
Mr. Almarichi?
Yes.
Mr. Kiesblas?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee, for the list, because I'm gonna head and turn my page and put it down. All right, item nine, now we have the approval of vouchers.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Bullock, Tiana, yes, Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Westlawser?
Yes.
Mr. Betsy?
Yes.
Mr. Almarichi?
Yes.
Mr. Kiesblas?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item 10, Treasury report.
Thank you, Adam Supervisor. First statute here is to give you folks your copy of your third quarter investment report. You'll notice some differences I keep working on, because I'm doing different things with it. If you look at the very top, where it says general fund investments, and the first highlighted, Hinkin Bank, AKA RRP account, that is a reflection of the turn all the way to the August where we first started tracking, like you got it on account. That's a reflection of your American Rescue Plan recovery money, that's what that is. And that's separate from the rest of your funds, your investment funds, and general fund balances and everything. 1.36669573 million dollars is what that amount is.
Say that one more time.
A million 366,069573. As of today, we still have that money, because we have not done any budget amendment or done anything to write, I think we voted that spending $20,000. And there's also some money potentially that could go to the beliefs of Adam, I think it's the broadband, Jason, you're on that committee. Thank you for pointing somebody from that, by the way. So there's some money that's gonna come out of that fund in some weeks, I would imagine. As well as the other highlights that you'll see, it's basically, we've kinda, what I like to call, we've gotten over center. You've noticed that our investment fund is a little larger than what it was, and you get down to this month, than what the actual general fund, fund balance is, and that purely is a matter of cash flow. And what that means is, from this point forward to the rest of the year, you're gonna be operating somewhat out of your fund balance, as we knew we were gonna be operating out of our fund balance. However, you will get some general fund revenue that's gonna offset that, and it's gonna go back and forth a little bit. Probably you won't notice as much today, it's the biggest day I noticed it, because I had to take a deal with it all day long, but you'll, you won't notice as much, but you're, if you look at the general fund checking, where our sweep account, we're down to $314,000 I took today, and your, your, your investment account actually went up, and say, well, how could that happen? Well, because you're, you're actually gonna start funding money out of your investment funds. We have a fund that we keep at one bank, we have seven institutions that we have ready, ready available money to sweep in when we get to this point. This year, we're in this position because, as you notice at the top of the page, we did back in the spring here, we did a million-dollar CD, with, actually, we did a million-dollar treasury note, when treasury notes went up to three and a half percent, and we took out one of the investment with them for Act, Public Act 20, allows us to do that. And it's gonna give us some interest for a couple of years, it'll pay off more each year as it goes, and that was a good investment, where we've had troubles getting in money, like everybody else has, out of our funds in the bank in the last couple of years. CDs haven't paid a lot of money, or are very limited to what we can invest in, as a township. But that's where you're at. You have 5.45080709 in the way of general fund total monies. Investment fund totals for that amount are $5,136,48363. So that's where you're at for investment funds, and that number will change. Probably before the end of the week, we'll start going that way, because we're gonna need some money to operate with to finish out the year. Any questions, if you'd have any to answer?
Thank you. That's great, I appreciate it.
That's really helpful, Steve. Thanks.
All right, item 11, which is committee appointments, there are none. Item 12, which is the township committee reports, there is none. Thirteen, item, unfinished business, A, large A, reduction and discussion, small a. I think that's... Is that Ben's? There you go.
I think you guys have all met me, I think you pointed out, I've been the public works director. So earlier this year, Meridian Township brought it to my attention. Their, the intersection of Marsh and Business 69, we did some renovations on it back in 2018, their crosswalk, and they've received multiple complaints about the snow piling up in that intersection and not being taken care of. And this was, like I said, this was brought to my attention at the end of our snow plowing season. This, beginning of this year, so going into this snow plowing season, there's some snow plowing today. I'm just kinda looking for some guidance on what you guys would want to do, based on the resolutions from Clinton County and from our board. If you read through those, it says, we are assumed responsibilities for that, that intersection. So that's the sidewalk that goes through there. Al?
M.Dot has told us to stay out of there. They don't want Bath Township in there plowing. And we have talked to them and talked to them about keeping that clean, because there are people that walk across there. And they said they don't want Bath Township in there.
So I've gotten kind of, everybody's pointing fingers at everybody else, and I'm not pointing at the county, or Meridian pointing at, you know, us, and, you know, the county pointing back at us, so you got an input, Jason? I just wanna say, I told you so.
I know.
You brought this up at the Planning Commission meeting, and I've been telling you over and over and over again, that was the agreement. Now, I can't speak to M.Dot's, you know, going back on that, but that was a serious conversation.
That was a question we asked them before they even did the project. Who's gonna take care of the snow?
There were lots of questions about that, any project, I don't think anyone liked the...
No.
Yes, that was one of them, and they were explicit, at least at the Planning Commission meeting, that it was their responsibility.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. I had sent out an email to Mark Trotter of the Clinton County Road Commission, asking his thoughts on some options and what we can do. He indicated that both M.Dot and the Clinton County Road Commission, Clinton County Road Commission plows in the area, but they would not do that work. It's possible to contract with Meridian Township. We could also bid out the snow removal. The last item that he included in his email was that the township could choose not to remove snow in the winter, and basically leave it as is. From the road commission's perspective, he said they don't mandate that pathways need to be cleared, it's up to the owner. But he recommended that if we did go that route, that we work through M.Dot landscaping to basically have an agreement on that, that we weren't going to maintain it during the winter.
Give our own ordinance.
I responded back to him that, yeah, we don't like to be the ones that don't practice what we preach, so. That we should maintain it, so.
According to what this is saying, you're absolutely correct. You are mandated to maintain it. Your resolution states that we have responsibility. That's what I, this is in 2018.
It's owned by, it isn't owned by Bath Township.
No, it says, this is a resolution passed by Bath Township in 2018, that says we're responsible, and that's even in our ordinances. So I'm...
I was saying, even Jason was that, and then very, very specific, it's not your domain, it's our domain, and you stay out of it. Oh, I know what that says.
That's what I, that's what I not understand. This is 2018.
Well, I understand what it says, and I told you what they responded to that.
So we just ignored it? I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand.
They told us.
They told us to stay out of there.
Our responsibilities.
Why did you all pass this resolution?
Yeah, that's...
Since I wanna look up the whole way here, that was here during the point in time, because it was agreed upon, it was a good thing to do for the community for a going area where they have a sidewalk, and all municipalities that are, have received Act 51 money, excuse me, I hit the numbers wrong. Not very good with numbers, something. But Act 51 money is receiving money for roads and sidewalks and such, and the care and the maintenance of them. And since our neighboring sister township, Meridian Township, who we try to work with and be, can plead with, I might add, we also have a lot of people in the Hazel School District who live in Bath, and in that area as well, and they'd like to be able to get across the street and go to their bank, or go to the store up on the hill, or the restaurant, or whatever. I don't wanna take and give anybody any, any stuff here, but anyhow, so the idea was, and it was discussed during this whole comment, this whole session, that the fact that we might contract, since Meridian Township already had the equipment to take and do this, and was already doing this, we would contract with them, and we would let them maintain that. And we actually contacted Meridian Township back in 2018, and they expressed an idea that maybe they would do this for us. So that's why we passed this resolution, because we felt it was a good thing for the community. When I say community, that community right there, which the boundary lies, and it, and it should be done, I think. I personally think, myself personally, I think we've had this conversation just recently about sidewalks. I think that this township should take a little more proactive role in some of the sidewalks we have here, just as Meridian Township does in theirs. This sidewalk, it goes from right here at the top of the hill, it goes down to the high school, I don't know how many of those, we should put a hook walker tape on there and see how many people in the day go down it like they do with vehicles. But it should be, it should be cleaned and taken care of, and I don't think it's asking too much for people that, well, from Township here, to look into that. I said something about voting, and I hope in a couple of weeks, when I go to vote down here at the Bath schools, and I go to walk into the museum complex, that I don't trip over the grass growing between the cracks. I think that's wrong. And I think it's wrong whether or not, I don't care if M.Dot does own that down there, and they ought to take it, figure it out, and ought to figure out how to make it work for everybody, because they don't live there, but the people of that do, and that's why we passed this resolution. I guess that's a long-winded, well, stance, I'll get alcohol.
No, that's helpful. I just didn't know what was the impetus for this.
It was, it was decided, and it was kinda contentious, just as it is right now, and we had one member, she's not on our board anymore, but she voted against it. Because we, it was this old adage, the old sidewalk thing, you know, we don't take care of sidewalks. Well, guess what? We live in a flexible society. We live in a world today where things are different. It's not the way it was years ago with your parents. I mean, I think we gotta take a little responsibility. If God says you got $6 million laying around here, you're not gonna clean sidewalk, or pay somebody to do it.
Thank you. Yes.
I appreciate hearing that at the time that you had had a conversation with Meridian Township, because that's not something that I think, or I were aware of, and so we can...
I believe, and I don't remember, I don't think you were the superintendent at the time.
I was not.
And so, you know, it dated me, I'm looking at it, I'm thinking, I'm thinking, stack well, I'm like, who are they? No, I don't perfectly well, but I've been here too long. But the idea was, is that we talked about that, I think Dan reached out to them, and it may have been one of our many planners, you mentioned, that we had reached out to them as well, and we talked about this.
And I don't have any records of that, so that's, I find that helpful, and if that's the direction this board would like to move, we can certainly do that.
But you drive over to Meridian Township, and you look around during the snow melt times, when they have snow on the sidewalks, they have specialized equipment to do this. They're already to the top of the hill, let them come down, get a little cross the road, and let them, or you can have that.
We discussed that today. They're, they're in the area, because that was one of our ideas.
But I do, I do think, think about our own little sidewalks we have here in the downtown as well.
I can support that direction. If we wanna contract with Meridian to have them do this, I don't have a problem with that.
Quick question for them, though.
But I also didn't have a problem with it, when they told us it was their domain, and we were to stay out of it.
I think that's probably somebody that's been there for, asking things, if they're not living in our flexible society that we're living in today.
Ben, what equipment do we have, if we're talking about the sidewalks?
For small equipment, we have, we just purchased this year a Bobcat Tool Cat, and we also have a Kubota side-by-side with a lot on it. We do have some smaller sidewalk stuff, but the issue, the issue with that area is, it's quite a trek from here to get down to plow just an intersection.
No, I'm just talking about our sidewalks that we already have, because I totally agree, put that down as a red letter, that your sidewalks here really do, Township should be doing that. And that's what I guess I was wondering, do we have the equipment to do it?
We do it where we own property.
No, what we're talking about is, we don't enforce our ordinance of, we need to be sure that those sidewalks are clean, so that people can walk on them. So if we don't enforce the ordinance, then we should be cleaning them. It's one or the other.
I don't believe that the actions ever been determined by this board.
I know, that's what I'm saying, that's why I ask, so.
That's totally up to the board.
No, it is, but we have the equipment. That was my...
We have to, yeah, to maintain our own, our own sidewalks. We do our Bath Township-owned property.
Okay, no, that's all that I was looking at. Thank you. Any other questions? Well, is there some motion that has to do with contracting, okay, so the Meridian Township?
We would probably reach out to Meridian Township and have a draft agreement that we would bring back and have you vote on.
Do you need a motion for that, for you to do that?
I don't think so. I think we haven't...
That's all I was asking you, yes, but it's still one of those things that you're gonna reach out to another township. Okay, got it.
Anything else? Thank you.
No, thank you. All right, it looks like we are at 13 unfinished business, small b, the proposal for the facilitation of the community dialogue on expansion. Judy, I think that's yours.
Good evening. Judy Garty, Chair of Senior Services Advisory Board. I'm excited to update you tonight on the actions that we've taken since the board voted a month ago to allocate $20,000 towards the process of exploring the expansion of the senior center. After that evening's vote, I worked with Karen and Jason, and we reached out to a couple of community facilitation professionals, providing them with an outline of what our expectations were, and then received two proposals. One from Michigan State University Extension, the Sharret Institution, I mean Institute, part of Extension, and then one from an individual who does this professionally, Doak Blas. We interviewed both the MSU Extension and Doak regarding their proposals, and the Senior Services Advisory Board would like to recommend that the Township Board contract with Doak Blas. His proposal is before you. We are working together on this to look at the preliminary planning for outreach and engagement, to have a community dialogue. He outlines the dialogue, talks about the process, but also post-dialog process, providing us with a preliminary report, a validation session, a final report, and then as his deliverables, a preliminary report, including the summary of the open dialogue, and a full articulation of the recommendations and the reasoning behind them, a final... A final report, um, and then electronic PowerPoint presentation on the contents of the report. He's proposed in his budget that he be compensated three thousand two hundred dollars. You'll, have any of you ever met Doak Bloss before, or worked with him? I think you'll find him personable, engaging, um, there, just, very interested in having every voice be heard at the table, um, and uses a process for that that allows everyone to have a voice. Um, he's outcome-oriented and results-oriented, which I think is to our benefit. He's not engaging with us to engage in a process that might take months and months and months, but to actually facilitate a conversation with us, which will probably take place in November, and then move forward with, with the recommendations from the conversation. So I would just ask, do you support us in this effort? Uh, we have not, um, hired or interviewed architects and engineers yet. I think it would be very helpful to have, uh, a professional architect participate in the conversation, to hear, um, the needs and wants, um, of the seniors and the community. We plan to put an outreach plan together, which would invite people to come to the table. I'm inviting all of you to come to the table and participate in the discussion. I'll take any questions, but I certainly would like a positive action to move forward on this tonight, thank you.
Will you say the number again, that the quote was for?
What number? Oh, his price, thirty-two hundred?
That's different from what's up.
Yeah, I was just clarifying that.
Is that the first draft I was looking at? What do you have, Karen?
Uh, we have forty-three hundred.
Forty-three hundred, yeah, he, he sent me an early draft, maybe, I don't know, forty-three hundred. We had talked about, perhaps, say, not two X E, five thousand, that might be helpful, Jay, oh, sorry.
Can you, can you speak to, uh, Mr. Bloss's credentials and experience?
I can't hear you.
Can you speak to Mr. Bloss's credentials and experience?
Karen, did you provide them with this, um, resume?
I did not, I just provided them with the, with the proposal.
So you don't know?
I don't have it with me. I've worked with Bloss, Doak, for probably, um, twenty years off and on, uh, I be, I first met Doak when he was facilitating the Community Voices Project for, um, the Inham County Department of Health, when they were looking at federally funded, um, health, district health offices. Um, and also recently seen some of his work with the Homeless Institute, so he's done a lot of really engaging work within the community, meaningful work within the community, but I can't get you his resume, not a problem.
Uh, on page one, it says that you or he may be engaged with folks that don't attend the senior center. I'd love to make sure that's a will rather than a may. I think that's critical, and I think, uh, some of the other committees could be good to engage with, and I'm glad you said the board, because I thought the board should be listed too, and perhaps other community groups. Knowing you've got a little bit more wiggle room in your money, maybe it might take them longer, but I think it would be more richer data to collect.
Agreed, yeah, thank you.
Give me your question. Thank you, Judy. Thank you. Okay, we will be looking at thirteen unfinished business, B is a boy, items for action. And we have the second reading adoption. Superintendent Goldring.
Thank you, this was introduced by our planner, who's on his honeymoon this week. Um, if there are any questions, I would be happy to try and answer them for you, um, but this would be for, um, second reading adoption.
I'll move approval of the second reading adoption of zoning ordinance amendment thirty-one point eighty-two for wind energy conversion systems as presented.
Does this go to the one acre?
Yes.
Just as, as of last time, I will not be supporting this ordinance, I think it's, uh, not justified, given changes in technology. I don't think there's a clear rationale for excluding, uh, folks who live on parcels less than one acre.
Is there a second? Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Shoot.
Ms. Butler, challenge, yes, Ms. Howe?
No.
Mr. Westfasser?
No.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Mr. Amoriti?
No.
Mr. Fiosglis?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrank?
No.
So that gives us, how many? Four, three, okay. So four noes and three yes, so it fails. Okay. The next one.
Can I ask a question?
Done that, we are voted, so...
I know, it's a post-vote question.
Okay.
Uh, how would you all like me to take that back to the Planning Commission? We, we had one vote that was yes, and one vote that was no. We took a vote last time, and we passed it, and when we took a vote this time, and we did not pass it. Are you all interested in the Planning Commission reworking this? Do you not want it to come back to us? I just want to give them some guidance on where we want to go.
Okay. For me, I don't know if your guidance would be going back and telling them that it was going to no, so it either needs to be worked. My reasoning was the same as Jason's, it's the one, I think it's too small. Go ahead, please.
My, my take is that's the blanket denial for parcels less than one acre is, doesn't really address the issue. If there are nature, if the nature, if there are complaints out there, better understanding complaints, whether it's noise-based, or it's height, it's a visual distraction, I think having an ordinance that addresses those would, I, I, I have a greater shelf life, uh, when it comes to technology, especially as this equipment becomes smaller and smaller and more discreet.
Then open...
Yeah, Marie, you're saying you want the parcel smaller?
Oh, no, I think, I think the one acre parcel is too small, and I think Jason's correct, technology today makes a huge difference. It's not as if you're putting this large windmill, you're putting this smaller one, and understand, but I think for us, the mandate with one acre is...
So you would like the number higher?
I'd like it higher.
I think that's opposite of what Jason's saying.
Yes.
Well, but the no is still the same.
Okay, I'm just trying to clarify.
Yeah.
You want larger acreage in order to have a whack on it?
In order, in order to be able to do the windmill, I think you need to have, I don't think you need to penalize, because you're in a subdivision, so you need to have a larger...
But that is penalizing.
No, it's not. Um, how do I explain that? It's not penalizing, though.
I'm only using that term because you did.
No, no, I understand, I understand. When you have a one acre parcel, to mandate that you can have, to me, I don't know that we have the right to mandate to anybody in our township, frankly, how you do that type of thing.
Well, this isn't a mandate, this is permissive.
Well, if you, if you're wanting, that's a mandate. If I have a half an acre, I can't have it. If I have three quarters of an acre, or seven eighths, I can't have it. But if I have an acre, it's okay.
And you think it should be more?
I think it should be a larger piece, and I, I know that...
Like, how big would you want it to go?
I'm not even sure that you really should be mandating, frankly, but...
But I just want to be clear, it's not mandating anybody have a whack. It's, it's limiting who can have it.
Which is mandating that you can't have it, if you, if you buy into a subdivision, that's saying that you can't do that, that is mandated.
I mean, that's not what mandate means, but, but you're, you're saying you want the parcel larger?
I'm saying...
I mean, she's, she said that three times, and then has walked her way back, so I'm just trying to clarify.
Walked her way back. What I, and, does it sound like I am, because I'm sorry if it does, because I'm not. What I'm trying to say is that I'm not sure we should be mandating to anybody, and yes, that is a mandate, when in fact you do that, and you say, yes, you have to do that.
Nobody has to do anything, though, just to be clear.
If I, if I wanted to put one and a seven eighths of an acre, you're just telling me I can't do it.
Right.
And I'm saying that you need to have it, I don't want any mandates of any kind, and for, that's, I think, part of the issue, whether it needs to be larger, two, ten, fifteen, but, I mean, I have ten acres, so that's not, I have no dog in this fight when it comes to that. I just don't think that that's a proper place for us to be able to mandate to anybody what they should or shouldn't do.
I mean, that's the whole nature of what the Planning Commission does with everything we do. So, Jason, maybe something more tangible I can take back to the Planning Commission.
The supervisor's saying is that she wants it larger in terms of opens, that more, more members of the community, regardless of the parcel size, should have access and the ability to...
So smaller parcel size, which allows for more parcels.
Uh, no restrictions on, based on size of one's property.
Got it.
You couldn't, okay, that's, that's correct.
Sorry, I, I vote, I vote as well, too, so I'll tell you what my feeling is, if people really would like to date back, and I don't really want to be shot by the Planning Commission, and I appreciate everything they do and what they do. I, I really question the amount of, of need for that in our township, in other words, and what, well, how many people actually there is that's actually considered this. This is going to require not only, and I realize some of the new stuff is different, but it's going, it could require a grid, a different power, uh, to be able to transport this power, or get this power out of here. When I was away from here for eight years, I worked for years in, in, around every one of these things, it's in Michigan, in every area that there is, in the agricultural settings. It's very, um, aesthetically, not as, it's kind of neat to look at, out in the wide open country, the farms, but I question whether our landscape that we have here, whether it would fit in well here at all, or whether it would just create more issues for things. Uh, I lived through the, the, the process back in the day, went to federal court and got sued, and everything else, or the cell tower thing, when they put a cell tower in, and it up right out here, outside the back door here, and, and, uh, that was, that was, it was an aesthetic thing, people didn't want to look at it. So I, I think you're really, or, I think you really, I don't know, so the public really, um, knows what they're asking for here, uh, what the, what the Planning Commission's asking for. I believe in property rights, but I also believe in responsible taking care of what we have here. The other thing you want to look at this, and I talked about this the last meeting with Miles was here, is each one of these, uh, wind energy systems that you see represent, and I know this because I did insurance work for all these farmers for years, for eight years up the gun from here, that represents about a fifteen thousand dollar token a year that they receive for these things, for each one they have on their farm line, so it's a big deal for farmers, is for subsidizing this farm and taking care of it. But along with that, these are all subject to personal property tax, and they get a personal property tax, uh, statement, and they open their taxing authority, uh, for that structure, and they have to pay personal property tax on it as well. Uh, so the community's getting some money out of it for the personal property taxes, and the ag people are getting some money out of it, but we're not an ag community, folks. Now, I heard, I haven't talked about solar panels a little bit, and a little bit later, and farmers, uh, are against that, a lot of them are. Here's the thing about a solar system, it's no different than a wind system. Wind system, if they're a big tower, you got to have so many deep circumference for it to fall down and not hit anything, but in the solar thing, it only actually, you look, if them people only actually utilize the amount of land that the panels are on in the field, and so you're not utilizing the full acreage of land that they can use it for productivity. And I think it's actually not the deal for farmers, what people think it is. If you got a lot of money, and you got some extra land, you want to make, sell it, and you can, but pretty hard to, to make it work for it. But I do, that's my concern, I think it's the township, I, I appreciate the Planning Commission, but I think they could spend their time working on something better.
I just want to be clear, this isn't windmills, and voting no on this means that these are allowed, to Marie's point, on any parcel?
I understand.
Okay, I just want to make sure everyone's on the same page as that, so these still will be allowed in the township?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, that'll, that's helpful feedback to give to the Planning Commission.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Are these, uh, units including solar panels, do they all have personal property tax?
I couldn't tell you the solar panel part, but I can tell you on the, on the windmills, which is not what we're talking about here, but, but, I believe in, uh, build it, it'll fall, it'll come. That's, that's what I believe in, and I think, I think, I think it's true. Uh, but yes, but somehow, uh, I can't say as though, all the ones that are big ones that are in the sky, such as you see in the Ithaca area, Cadillac area, the southern Michigan area, um, they're aesthetically fit into the landscape very well, um, and they are all taxed, they're, 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 they, each one of them, the last annual, it's been about five, six years since I've been in that business, but, um, they create a fifteen thousand dollar a year token, what they get out of them, and they get, uh, well, they're all taxed, they, uh, and there's a thing in MTE's magazine, there was an article in here, not that long ago, and it, and it, and it's about the personal property tax, and these guys pay, they pay a percentage of that, it's probably twenty-five percent of that is more than personal property tax. The taxing units get their money out of it as well.
Okay, we're going to go on to, items for action, B is a boy. Love Station Two Oh Two, as they wrote.
Thank you. Um, Brad was here, Brad Gersky, the director of SCULA was here last time, and talked about the pump at Love Station Two Oh Two, and it needs to be replaced. He has recommended that we go, and I hope I'm saying it correctly, a flight submersible pump, a thirty-four horsepower at thirty-six thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. Um, SCULA has currently committed fifteen thousand towards that, and then we would use, um, the remainder, it approved tonight, um, of the funds held in the SCULA.
I have a question, but I'll wait until there's this second discussion, so... No, anybody want to make a motion, if there was any, I'll give a motion. Want your motion? So before we get to that.
My question.
This is, it says utilize your funds held, reserve, why is there no treasure for this thing? Why is it, just educate me on this.
Because it's not our money, but it belongs to the authority to have a treasurer, takes care of that. But my, well, I got a question about this, the way, the way this reads, it says that SCULA has committed fifteen thousand towards the purchases, thirty-six thousand nine twenty-five is, is, is what they're saying, that fifteen thousand's coming out of our, our Love Station Reserve.
No, no, they, they have an additional fifteen thousand, that's not part of our reserve, that's part of their budget, that they are willing to use towards this, separate money.
So, so the fifteen thousand is separate money, and the thirty-six is coming out of Love Station Reserve fund, uh, the authority?
Sixteen nine twenty-five out of reserve.
No. They, they have fifteen thousand in their current budget, that they're willing to use towards the thirty-six. So the balance to us would be sixteen thousand.
And that's coming out Love Station Reserve, so no, no money out of pocket for the township's sewer fund?
Correct, and that's why I didn't know whether you're, correct, the treasurer do that, or whether...
They have their own treasury.
Because they have their own treasure.
But we have our own money over there as well. The, this, this Love Station Reserve fund is money that you've put into that over the years to build it up, and it's for this purpose, but, but thank you, you get a repair that has to be made, and if you, maybe you don't really want to spend money on the township sewer fund right now, do that, because you have other things you're doing, well, that is for that purpose.
So that's the reason we don't authorize the superintendent to take your, thank you. That's so like...
The balance would be twenty-one thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars.
That's after...
Their fifteen.
After their fifteen itself.
So we would be using twenty-one thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars out of our fund, our reserve.
Twenty-eight, is that what?
I believe we, I believe we get three hundred and thirty-four thousand over there.
I thought it was a six-figure, okay. Close enough, that was close enough, all right.
I need to authorize the superintendent to utilize funds to, uh, commit money towards the, uh, legit submersible pump?
Second.
Okay.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Westfasser?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Mr. Almarigi?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bloods?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Taylor, yes.
Okay. We have the twenty, twenty-three, so we're going to be on, on finisher items for action, or to be C, small C. The twenty-twenty-third fiscal year budget public hearing. Okay, we have a motion to accept that and then have a discussion?
Can we have it introduced first?
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, if you want a motion to set the date.
Oh. I lost my page, sorry.
No, you did.
Um, I am asking tonight for you to determine a date for the budget public hearing, and then subsequently the adoption of the twenty-twenty-three budget. Um, the dates available to the board to hold the budget, uh, that's a lot of words, budget public hearing during a regular board meeting are Monday, November twenty-first, and this, uh, Monday, December fifth. And then in discussing the budget adaption, the dates available are, the first two are the same, no, uh, Monday, November twenty-first, and Monday, December fifth, and in addition, Monday, December nineteenth. You can hold a public hearing in the adaption on the same evening, you do not have to, you can make them separate. So I'm looking for direction in setting the budget public hearing, because it needs to be noticed in a paper.
Is the board ready to be able to have a public hearing?
What's the first meeting date in November?
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first. Twenty-first. Because we've canceled the meeting prior to the election, election.
Everybody do the twenty-first November?
No.
Sorry, it's not funny.
I don't bring it up, it's honorable, you say that.
I'll make a motion to set the public hearing for November twenty-first board meeting.
Second.
Okay, so this does the public hearing, it's just a public hearing.
It's a public hearing.
Will you send us the new cover sheet, like, as soon as you can turn it around? Thank you.
Can, can I ask a question?
Well, you should have discussion now.
Is there, is there a reason why you, you're going to hold a public hearing, is there a reason why you wouldn't adopt the budget that that date as well?
No, I think that's, that's a reasonable request, I think that's what you're saying, I think that's what the superintendent's saying.
I think.
You can have a public hearing and adopt it at the same time. So if you want to look at November twenty-first, the public hearing and the adaption.
I'll have just my motion.
It's been done that way, so I've been managing this, I remember, that's why.
Correct.
But we're not forced to do that.
That's correct.
Yeah, so I wouldn't put it into your motion. Because if something were to happen at the public state, you know, public, um, hearing, and someone.
In the same sense as nothing, if there's no obstruction to it, and objection to it, then why would, you know, would you?
Why would you wait?
Always the way of the adoption, if there was some financial problem.
Yeah, I don't think we need to make a motion that we're going to make a motion later, is what I'm saying. We have the ability to put it on the agenda.
I was looking for that, first was right there, that was, if we were not intending on doing it that night, or if there was another reason that we needed to.
Yeah. Our intention should be to do it.
Yes.
Okay.
Because you will have another crack at it December. However, that does for another really good point, which doesn't have anything to do with twenty-three budget, but it does have everything to do with twenty-four budget. But that's a later date that we discuss. So what we're looking at here is public hearing, the motion, trustee Denzie was to hold it, have a public hearing on Monday, November twenty-first, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, I think I'd like the member, and to have it improve the adoption of the budget that evening.
And if something comes up and you don't want it back, then you.
No, as you lay it. I'll second that.
So by your motion, then, are we forced to have it at that day?
Yes.
We're not forced to.
No, but you can if.
Forced to have, you, you are going to have the public hearing on the twenty.
Then I don't, I don't know why we would put it into a motion form that we have to have that at, at that night.
Because if you don't, then you can't do it that night.
I wouldn't.
Sure you can.
I wouldn't prepare the documents, if you told me you were just going to have a budget public hearing. I wouldn't prepare the documents that you need to finalize the budget and adopt it.
But you can.
If this board wants me to do that, I can.
It doesn't make sense to make a motion to say we're going to take action on something at some day. If we want it, we should put it on the agenda and choose to take action or not. If we make a motion, we're forcing ourselves to take action, when that night we may not want to.
Your action that night could be postponed until next week.
You can vote.
My action could be anything, what's right? I understand something, uh, I don't understand, how many?
You have to have a motion for public hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We don't normally take a motion to place something on the agenda like that, is my point. It locks us into something.
This is a more formal process, though, that requires a lot of preparation prior to, I mean, so I, I, if, if it wasn't your intention to have it the same night, I wouldn't prepare the documents. If you were intending to do it the same night, I could prepare the documents, and if you so choose, chose to postpone it.
But you could also prepare the documents without us taking a motion for you to prepare documents.
I'm saying to you, I wouldn't put the budget adaption on the agenda unless you indicated you were so inclined to adopt it that night.
Right, but what Steve was saying is we are so inclined, but we don't have to take formal action to do so.
Providing, I'm going to interject, providing if you're going to take it, if, if, if we're going to take, and, uh, is, 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 when you do the adoptions, I remember it's, it's written out, it's typed out into actual document.
Correct.
It's not a fill-in-the-blank.
No, there's several, there's several pieces.
I don't believe we can fill in the blank and make it be a lot of sufficient.
There are several pieces, that's what I'm saying.
That's my point of doing this, it has to actually be a written document. And I, and if you want to do this, you need to find it, and you need to have it done. Myself, I, I, I understand what you're saying, Ryan, but I don't really, um, I don't have a problem with it one way or the other. Um, I, I, for years, we've, we've had a public hearing, and everybody's, it went fairly smooth during the work process, which we've had, um, we adopted, the only thing is the caveat in this thing, it's different from what we've had in the past, is what, uh, trustee Almarigi has stated, is he's not, uh, doesn't have a dock in a pond, not this per se, because he's, he does have a dock, but he doesn't, uh, he won't be here. You will have possibly one new board member, um, if you wait, um, and, and I don't, I guess you're going to have, you're going to have one new board member anyway, and you're going to saddle that with one vote of being able to, to take it or not take it. And, and, but that's just the lay of the land, that's what happens in the half-year election, um, that's the way this stuff works. And normally here, we have all, potentially all seven members could be voted out of office on November twentieth, you could, they could have to take and decide, they have less than thirty days to fix things. When I came back here in two thousand sixteen, I had forty-five days to get this stuff framed and get it back to you, that you're up. Well, I'm not, I, I, I like the plan, um, that's why I asked that question.
Well, and that's.
Because the document has to be written.
There's five different documents.
Fill-in-the-blank.
There's five different documents.
That's, that's correct.
Well, I will say, I have been on the board, that we have changed it that night, we've had to do it literally in real time.
And you, and your audit shows that.
No, the audit said that that was okay.
No, but it shows that, they, they, they give you a comment on that, because they look at that, and it needs to be a written document, they can't get.
Well, it is written, it's not, like, theoretical.
Fill-in-the-blank don't work.
All right, trustee Almarigi?
Just a point of clarification, I actually have fourteen docs, most of them are in the notes. But the one doc that does matter is that I am a taxpaying citizen, so, um, I just want to point that out. The other thing is that we're splitting hairs here, so I think we all want the same thing, getting action as soon as done as possible. I don't like it matters one way or the other, how we phrase it, but it sounds like, according to the superintendent, it would be her preference if we hold the motion in a perfect way, so that authorizes and no disturb to be prepared for that meeting.
I'm fine with that, but I want the ability to make a change to the budget that night, if we need to. If we all are agreeing that that's the format, I'm on board. I don't want to be forced to vote on the budget because it's typed up.
You also have the ability to take and change the budget at any time, even this year, as of, you know, this, I'm not patronizing you.
No, I know.
You're just making a statement, you can make a budget amendment at that time you want.
Yeah, it just, it sends a message to the public, like, please come and give us your feedback, we're going to vote on what we typed out earlier tonight, but please come. I want to make sure people know, if they find some error that we've made, or they have some great idea, that we would empower them to come and give us that feedback, and either have the ability to change it that night, or postpone it one meeting, and make that change if, if this board was so willing to do.
At worst, what would happen here is, I don't, superintendent, you would have to take and rewrite the script.
Yep.
And that, that would.
Which if they're prepared, that's easy.
That's correct.
So, I'm, I'm, I have what I, if, this is your vote. Thank you. And maybe trustee, you understand what you're saying as well.
Yep.
Do we do a public hearing and adaption? Mr. Ross Wester?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Mr. Almarigi?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bloods?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Taylor, yes, Ms. How.
I'll say yes. Okay. We are now on items for action, D, small D, acceptance of the recreational advisory committee bylaws.
Good job. Yeah, thank you.
Um, so this was brought to you a couple of years ago, um, I received your feedback and shared that with the recreation advisory committee, they did not have a forum last month, because they did not meet, but they met this month, um, and discussed this, uh, last week. Um, they did decide to make a change to, um, number three, um, item A, um, which was the ex parte, um, line, they did change that to read, um, that members of the committee shall not speak or act in the absence of the committee unless approved to do so by a majority vote of the committee. Um, make it a little bit more clear, as was indicated by you all, that, that seemed a little bit muddy. So that was clarified, that is the only change that was made to this document since the last time we saw it.
Could you explain to me what it's supposed to mean? Understanding it is clear.
Sure.
But I, I guess I would.
Um, I, I can give you an example, I can give you an example, if that's helpful. Um, so, as this, the, um, now houses recreation, um, parks and the farmer's market. Um, the farmer's market, for example, has a process by which they, um, bring in vendors for the farmer's market. Um, and that, and that needs to go through, um, the recreation coordinator, which is Becca. Um, so it, this would, um, preclude somebody from going out to the committee and basically telling a vendor, hey, you can come sell at our farmer's market. Um, because they are not able to do that on behalf of the committee or on behalf of the farmer's market. Um, so that's just saying, they would need to bring that to the committee and say, this person would like to be a vendor, and then Becca could say, they can come fill out an application, and we can discuss that. That's just an example.
No, I understand, that's a good example. Um, I thought that was an interesting item, yeah, to place like that. So, does this mean if a member has an issue, they can't come up to one more member?
If they have an issue, that's an issue for them personally, but they should not bring an issue that they're speaking on behalf of the committee as a whole, unless they are charged to do that by the committee.
Okay, so if a committee member has something that's not sitting well, that's what their way of putting it, um, and they want to talk to a board member, they can't do that?
No, they can do that.
Without going to the committee?
They can do that, if they have something that they don't, anything that they feel unhappy about, they can of course talk to somebody about that, but they should not bring it as saying the committee is unhappy about this.
I got it, but me as an individual.
Sure.
Got it. Because what happened here, it seems, and then this is what I, I'm redundant, I apologize for that. You're talking about they meet once a month.
Mm-hmm.
So they come to the committee to ask permission to speak, but they can't speak until the committee, can they speak? I mean, will the committee make that determination?
Well, that would usually just be for certain circumstances, such as if they had decided that they wanted to move forward with an event, and they voted on a spokesperson from their committee to come and speak to you all.
Okay.
That would be another example, but this doesn't, this doesn't keep them from engaging with the community on work that they are doing and discussing, um, issues that they are having on their agenda or anything like that, it's just saying that they can't make decisions or act on behalf of the committee.
Okay, because there's a language, it would be like a thirty-day
Yes.
lag of, you know, whether they want to make a decision or not, okay, gotcha. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, looks like that is.
Who got the board on that?
I was just going to say, we're looking at, we're turning too quickly. Moving it right along, um, yes, that's my interaction.
Don't make the motion, you, uh, accept the changes recommended by the advisory committee bylaws.
Thank you. Your second.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Mr. Almarigi?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bloods?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Taylor, yes, Ms. How?
Yes.
Mr. Ross Wester?
Yes.
Fourteen new business, these are items for introduction discussion. We have the draft agreement. Catch the interim, Ms. Chief?
Thank you. Um, Lieutenant Gary Smith is, um, here with us tonight, if there are any questions for him. Uh, he and I have met, and we have, uh, come to an agreement on, uh, an employment agreement that is in the package tonight, and it has been gone through as well by a legal counsel. You're seeing it tonight for introduction and discussion, I will respect, um, any and all questions, um, tonight as well. Of course, you can ask questions, um, my intention is for us to, um, take action on this on November twenty-first as well, um, so that it can be finalized. Um, this agreement would begin on December twenty-ninth, uh, twenty-twenty-two, at noon, um, although I have not received the official, um, in writing, uh, retirement notice from our current chief, that is the date that he, um, keeps telling me will be his date, um, if that should change, I'll keep this foreprised of that. Um, if you have any questions on this agreement for me or for Lieutenant Smith, I would be, um, happy, I'm sure he would be happy to entertain those.
Do you think we should get the formal statement from the current chief before acting on this?
Uh, I anticipate that I will have that at the beginning of November.
Okay, and we would act on this the end of November?
Yeah, we'll delay November. Thank you for asking that, I believe his intention was to provide notice, um, sixty days prior, which would be like November first, so I think he's, he was waiting for that timeframe.
I have one other suggestion on, uh, item two for term of employment. It says the parties reserve the right to extend this term and remove the interim status by mutual agreement. I recommend that say and/or, meaning we could do both of those things or either of those things.
Okay, so agree, the parties reserve the right to extend this term and/or remove the interim status by mutual agreement.
Right.
Okay.
So anybody, just, I have.
Well, well, in terms of what the retiring chief, do we need to take and have a, uh, since he's got sixty days notice, so we don't like to have a special board meeting on November first, relatively, that time to take and ratify. so we don't like to have a special board meeting on November first, relatively that time to take and ratify that, or are we gonna wait till November twenty first, or twenty-one days later?
To accept his retirement?
Yes.
I've not done through this before, so.
I think it's the board's, I think it's, I think it's the board's will how they want to handle this. If the board is okay with that, well, fine. If you ask for somebody for sixty days' notice and then you turn around and you don't act after three, one days, that's not really forthcoming. But the board needs to decide on that, or they can have a special meeting to take a deal with this, and then that's fine, too.
I appreciate that statement because I can think of that.
So what are you guys gonna do? Now that you said it, I'm gonna massage you, so.
I'm just a dumb kid in partway.
Hey, I'm a transplant, so whatever, whatever you guys. Nobody's really commenting on the fact of ratifying it. You gonna be there with?
I think they both may be done on the twenty-first.
The acceptance and the ratification?
Yep.
Twenty-first of?
November.
November, along with public hearing?
Yep.
I think the fact that we have already taken some action to empower the superintendent to negotiate with a potential new chief sort of sets us on the right path that we weren't, we're not gonna pull out the rug from the current chief.
Well, it's a contract. A contract can be altered in whatever way you want it to be. That's what you have a contract for.
Yep.
I'm good with it either way. I'm thrilled that these serve their communities well together, and I'm thrilled we have an interim in place. So I'm good with it either, or I just want to make sure we thought of it. But it is kind of, but not, this is a election here. This is part of the reason why we're not gonna have a board meeting, typically we could have a board meeting on the seventh. That's all we can do, we can handle this time. Just trying to put this stuff out.
So, trustee Rosecrans has, as I was before, every seat mentioned, of doing it together.
Do you have a, do you have a second?
Yes.
Ah, yeah.
I'll second that.
Didn't even know there was a motion.
I don't know if I don't have to pay Lyle out of my pocket because that's my goal.
So November twenty-first. You're saying we're going to ratify and, you know, we'll accept ratified retirement and then accept contract? Is that what you're looking to do?
What was your motion now?
Well, that's what you.
Do them both the same day.
Do them both the same day. So.
You, you, what you referred to against both, that you're gonna, you're gonna ratify the contract.
You're gonna take, accept his retirement first.
Yes.
Okay.
And then you'll go back and ratify the agreement with the chief, the new chief.
Okay.
So we're, we're voting to put something on the agenda?
Yeah. Yeah, we're voting on the agenda. That's what we do.
All right. Let's hope we don't always have to do it by vote. I have another question, sort of unrelated to this. You don't, but non-severability, number ten. So normally in these types of agreements, you would want it severable. Is there a reason that the attorney has indicated it should be non-severable?
I can't answer that. I would have to ask legal counsel as they drafted this, and I, I don't even know if you.
It's not a deal breaker for me. I just would, it's, usually you would see that if any one thing was ruled out.
Current contract, so there were several things that were recommended be changed because it had been three years and employment laws changed through the deal. So, I think the fact that it says that we would negotiate with faith to reach terms and conditions, I, it doesn't give me heartburn, but.
No, you just don't normally throw out a whole agreement because one piece has been ruled illegal. So again, I'm not gonna sleep over it, but I'd love to understand better the thought process.
Is there anything else? Because I have a change in that statement. Change being number one duties.
I would like to see. Tell me where that is at, please.
Number one.
Oh, number one.
She wasn't just saying that's her first change, she was saying that's the item.
Today, I'm waiting for everybody to be done, so, okay, I'm gonna, for, for me, it's gonna say the township or the township board as a whole, period. Then you remove and subject to the supervision and direction of the township superintendent. I think the board needs to have that responsibility, but, and then my sec, well, we're going to vote on that. This is a discussion, so, any discussion on it?
I don't think we should take supervision away from Karen. We'd be hiring her to supervise all of our employees. The last thing the chief needs is seven bosses.
I wonder if maybe the no ground is to, under seven termination B and then definition cause, if you look at number six, care to be responsive to the legal law for requests of the township superintendent. Inasmuch as the board delegates responsibilities to superintendent, I wonder if maybe there could be a addition to that of request of the township superintendent or requests by board resolution.
Okay, that still puts it back in the hands where it should be.
I don't think we should supervise the chief by board resolution either. I, I see the spirit of what you're saying, but I don't think that's a good idea.
I don't get supervision, but if the board makes a resolution asking the police department to change some facet of their operations.
They should be able to do that.
I, I, and they refuse, I, I think that should be a cause for separation.
It's actually a cause for separation for Karen because she's responsible for implementing that. Because ultimately, we empower her to supervise the department through the chief. I didn't mean that as a threat.
All right, my second thing goes, this goes to active salary, which is three compensation minimum. That's, that is one heck of a salary, under two thousand. Did I read that right?
It's actually subject to a formula. I had this conversation with a board member earlier today. So it actually is based off of the top road patrol salary. And then there's a formula by which the supervisory, which is the sergeants, receive their wage, the lieutenant receives his wage, and then the police receive, police chief receives his wage. And they're all set in percentages in their union contracts.
Who sets those dollar amounts? Who sets the contracts?
The board of trustees approve those contracts.
And they approve them when?
In twenty twenty.
And those contracts, then you have a percentage every year that's added to it? Is that what that's?
So the road patrol, the top road patrol, and then I believe the supervisory union has a certain percentage, I think it's three.
Percent.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Supervisors, ten percent above the road patrol.
Okay, ten percent above the road patrol.
Okay.
Lieutenant is.
Five percent above the sergeant.
And then the chief is five percent above the lieutenant.
So, not that Karen doesn't deserve it, because it probably does, but that seems like a large amount there.
It's the same amount Lyle would have received, can he?
I know.
Stayed in his contract.
I know.
So it's by a formula, so it's, it's not an arbitrary number.
But the formula is arbitrary because it was by a board trustee.
No, it's, it's a percentage.
I know. I understand.
It was negotiated.
Correct. Okay. It approved.
Nope, that's, that's my only. Okay, is there any other discussion?
Do you have a question? Under termination seven B, number fourteen, it says illegal activity on township premises during work for non-work hours. Does that mean that's the chief can do illegal activity off of township premises during, or not for hours?
That's what it means.
I'm good with that.
That's what we used to have staff, you'd go up and, okay, listen, another life. Okay, so the senior business items. Okay, do you have an item for action, which is the, which I'm a little confused with this one. Fire Department Public Safety Communication Subscriber Lease Agreement.
I'm sorry, we had a motion and a second for.
Not for items of discussion?
We did. It was to bring it back.
Oh, to bring it back.
The resignation and the, and the action.
Well, he did, but.
I didn't have my bell to ring.
Sorry.
Go ahead. Mr. Almariji?
Yes.
Discussion.
Mr. Funesbless?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler, Tiana, yes, Ms. Howe?
No.
Mr. Wissler?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm sure you're relaxed, please do. I heard nothing but good things about you, Gary. Okay. Now that we've taken a vote for items of introduction and discussion, we'll take items for action. And this one is the Fire Department Public Safety Communication Lease Agreement. This was talked about earlier.
Mm-hmm.
We're gonna, okay.
And I'm actually thrilled that our fire chief is here tonight. And if he'd like to speak to the podium, he could explain. I put a summary in your packet, but he works with us every day, so it's his expertise.
What this is, is a opportunity for us to buy, replace several of our handheld radios that have been giving us troubles. Our truck radios are pretty good shape, our handhelds are a little lippier. The Clinton County Director of Communications for nine-one-one has got this bond, and that's why it has to read as a lease agreement. We're leasing it for ten years from them with a five-year warranty. We can decide at that point if they're giving problematic, we can extend the warranty. But that's the whole deal, and we're only paying ten percent. Look at the numbers. Rough numbers, the amount of the radio price is fifty-eight thousand dollars. That's costing us fifty-eight hundred dollars. And that's still within our budget without a budget amendment for that type of purchase.
Several fifteen or just one?
Oh, fifteen. She's negotiating really hard. It is a huge deal for us, yes, it definitely is.
Before you guys vote on this, I thought first one, I'd like to see something changed on this second paragraph down. Well, we're, that's about public safety communication lease, and it goes on, that's about board trustees, and then December twenty first, two thousand twenty, it authorized an execution by superintendent program. Chief Lyndon Mulder, are you to mean that that is Chief Lyndon Mulder that authorized the public safety communication thing to the fire department, or is that, or is this?
No, no, no. We did a similar agreement back in twenty twenty-one, and this board authorized Chief Lyndon Mulder and I to execute that agreement, so.
We're gonna go through with that with this, with this.
We already did that.
But, but so we're not, this isn't, this may do with fire department data.
No, that was an example of what.
That was an example.
I gotta, I wanna make sure we weren't following this with that.
No.
The reason for the action is it needs to be voted on. We need to say, yes, we are going to do this to Clinton County's board commissioners, and they will have a meeting on it shortly here, as I recall. Yeah, exactly. So it's something that came to us about, yeah, ten days ago, and I said, yeah, this is a no-brainer, but that's why we've kind of, we're not trying to force this down your throat, but it, it just needs action real soon. So that's why it comes the way it has come.
Did we receive a grant at one time?
Did we receive a grant?
A grant? No.
No.
All right, any other questions? Normally, we have a discussion after this, but is there a motion? This is an item for action.
I'll move approval of the Bath Township Fire Department Public Safety Communication Subscriber Lease Agreement as presented.
That's a heck of a title, too.
Is that work? Need to take care of dogs.
So you guys think there are any questions and answers?
Mr. Funesbless?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler, Tiana, yes, Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Wissler?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Mr. Almariji?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Number fifteen, superintendent's report.
Thank you. As a reminder, I wanted to memorialize it, but November seventh, twenty twenty-two, board trustees meeting is canceled due to the general election. I wanted to put that down so not only the board to remember, but also the public. Judy and I, Judy Gardi and I, will be meeting with Doug Bloss later this week to begin our work on the senior senator expansion project. I'm excited to begin that work. I was able to be part of the MSU extension presentation, but not this. But I've heard very good things about Mr. Bloss, and so I'm excited to get started on that work. Our front office has been busy at work processing, is the best word I can say. Over, I think, two thousand election ballots have gone out at this time and are being received back. We received some updates in statute, I believe, this week, and we're trying to implement those changes very quickly so that we can ensure the integrity and the, and the safety of our elections. And we, we hope that the community understands that we do our very best to make sure that those things are put in place for them to be able to vote in this township. In addition to preparing for elections, we are also preparing for winter, one of Mr. Zeeb's favorite topics. So we will reach out to Meridian Township as soon as possible so that we can assure that come for a snowfall that we are prepared to not only clear our sidewalks, but clear the pathways over at Marsh and Saginaw. But hopefully, we will bring the agreement back to you all for your approval for that. We will also be preparing for tax collection. Never stopped around here, elections, and then working on a December first tax bill distribution. And then as well, I will be reaching out to the two candidates that are candidates for trustee to talk to them about the budget, if they would like to have that conversation, as well as there's training available to them shortly after either of them takes office through the Michigan Townships Association. So I would like to present them with those opportunities if they would like to take advantage of those things. So we'll be having that contact with them. So, any questions from you all? Thank you.
Okay, we have our second round, sixteen for public statement.
Raycockee, Park Lake Road. Want to talk a little bit about non-motorized. We talked about sidewalks tonight, which was great. And Jason, Joe Bensy, and Al, all were part in two thousand seventeen of passing a five-year non-motorized plan. And in that plan, there was also a survey done in the community. And the number one priority, among other things in there, was the Park Lake Trail and how important it was and how enthusiastic the public was, the public that, that responded. And then fast forward to two thousand nineteen. Parks and Rec and the Park Worth Advisory Board had a joint public meeting here in this room to engage the public to find out their support, whether or not they should go forward with it. There was a lot of enthusiasm. We had, I was in attendance. We had a great deal of, of the respondents that actually said, if we put forth.
actually said, if we put forth a millage, how much would it cost for our property taxes? And so, we just pulled something out of the air, it would be twenty bucks a year, and I had four people come up and say, can I just give my twenty, twenty dollars tonight to get it going? But I guess what I'm trying to say is, is that I, I've seen nothing but vacillation on this board's part on getting this project going, and this is huge, this is huge for the community, and nothing but good, and yet, and, and again, I wanna emphasize that, that Al, you were the, the one that was on the commission that voted for this in two thousand seventeen, and Joe and, and Jason, you were both on the planning commission that went over it, and, I mean, this isn't, this isn't some haphazard plan, this is, this is a very concrete and definitive planning process that costs this community a lot of money, and to sit on your butts and not do anything with this is just, it's ludicrous, and I personally helped start a nonprofit called Friends of Park Lake in two thousand nine, for the sole purpose of helping the community put this together, we've raised over eleven thousand dollars to help you in any way we can, and are willing to put that, put forth that money, and I've heard so many dissensions and so many arguments against it, it's just literally, and it's just preposterous, that I, why aren't you for it instead of against it, and I can't say I'm speaking for everyone, but I, I can say that I could pick out a couple of you that, you know, throw in, well, you know, and it's not if you personally like it, it's what's good for the community, that's what you were elected to do, is to, to put forth things to benefit the community, and this overwhelmingly benefits the community and has been overwhelmingly asked for by the community, and so I plead with you to, once again, this non-motorized plan was done in two thousand seventeen, and, and I'm, I'm one of the commissions that are responsible for upgrading this plan, and so, we'd like to be, be able to do it in a, in a positive, forward-thinking manner, we're not gonna get any smaller, this community's getting bigger, and it's getting exponentially bigger, and we need the, the recreational areas to do this, and, and it's kind of sad, I hear way more about a pickleball court and a volleyball court and paving Whistler Park than I do about the Park Lake Trail, and that's just preposterous in my, in my opinion, because we've been dragging our feet for over ten years on this, and I just plead with you to, and the reason I'm saying this now is because, Karen, you may be able to lighten us, but, uh, the survey is done, again, at the end of Webster Road, and irrespective of what that survey says, there's a legal libor from the circuit court with the county that states that Webster Road is for public use, period, and the law is the law, and you don't say, yeah, but there's two people down there that really don't like it, blah, 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 that doesn't matter, the law is the law, if the law states you have to stop at a stop sign, and this libor states that Webster Road, all the way around across the land bridge into the woods, is a public road, it doesn't matter if the private lander moved the road back in nineteen ninety-two, that doesn't matter, it's still a public road, and it's stated and certified and filed with the circuit court of Clinton County, nineteen fifty-eight it's been, so, I, I'm not gonna stop, but thank you for your time.
Is there anybody else?
And you know I'm here, Dean Ballser, Park Lake Road, I'm against it, we have Rose Lake right down the road, lots of trails, so we don't need more, there's other things we can put out with money, thank you.
Anybody else? No, Dean's there, thank you, Dean. All right, board, well, of course, you're always, board member comments? Start with Ryan, Steve?
Uh, thanks for coming, uh, make sure you get out to vote, it's nice to see one of our candidates, Ms. Kellerman, here, uh, wanting to learn about what's happening, in case she gets in here and can pick up and go, uh, so make sure you get out and vote.
Jason, thank you for your service, the two years, you've been a benefit to the board, thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming and staying. Staying is important, but, especially with the two chiefs there, that's, that's all rolling hall, guys, but thank you all for coming, greatly appreciate it, um, I don't think there's too much else to be said, other than it's very nice to see a lot of people here, I hope that continues to grow. Ryan White, get out and vote.
Thank you, um, Jason, I'd like to thank you for your time, you're a, um, a board member, and you're helping to become, uh, just as active as you, you stay active in other township things, uh, you feel more passionate about, and continue working with the community. With that said, superintendent, um, Phil Redd mentioned the county treasurers, uh, she didn't mention the county treasurer, she mentioned, I think, the county treasurer when we were talking about tax bills, obviously, I've always said I worked for the county treasurer, um, but the, uh, she's right, tax bills, winter tax bills are right around the corner, in fact, we will have our county treasurer's meeting next week, the twenty-sixth, and, uh, we'll, we'll work with what we got tapped, and we'll have, hopefully have the, uh, tax rule database and everything, which Beth and I have been working on, we'll probably have that all together and have it ready to go by sometime, uh, by the first meeting in November, the twenty-third. Nicole Redd?
I'd like to thank you all for coming, and I'd especially like to thank Jason for all this time and stuff on the board, and all the girls in the community, and I yield the rest of my time, which is...
(laughing). So I have two things, the, the first is less important, the second one is more important, the first is I, I wanna thank my fellow board members in the community for giving me the opportunity to serve, um, I have learned a ton about this township, I've learned a ton about how it operates, its staff, um, my takeaways, I, uh, from my time on this board are that we have an amazing community, um, and we're an amazing board, I, I, even though we swivel and we squawk and we have our disagreements, each and every one of this, this board member, or each of these board members, uh, truly cares about this community, and decisions are made from the heart, um, I, as I walk away, this will be my last meeting, I will walk away, uh, proud and confident in the functioning of this township, um, I wanna thank the superintendents, every superintendent and all the staff, I, for their patience in with my pestering and all my questions, um, I thank you for all that you do and all that, and how deeply you care about our community, um, so, I, so that's the first, I, more importantly, I, when I went to my day job this morning, I, the topic of conversation was suicide, I, we had a suicide, uh, over the weekend in Bath, um, a young college student, I, I, one of the things I wish the township would do more, I, and attend more to, is mental health, uh, there is a crisis going on in our community, uh, across all communities, I, while some of us, I, on this board don't think that, I, those who live in the Chandler Crossing area count as residents, they most certainly are, they are some of our most vulnerable residents, uh, but they're also, uh, the future of America, and so, please, 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 take the time and think about what supports and services we can do to support all of our community members, so thank you.
Officially adjourned.
I move the main speaker adjourned.
Second.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler, challenge a yes, Ms. Howe?
Yes.
And Mr. Whistler, sir?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Mr. Almeri, chief?
Yes.
Mr. Fiusblis?
Yes.
Thank you.
I wanna apologize to you, because we had to rush off the other...